Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that we have all council members present in our meetings. With that, we will begin with an opening ceremony. We turn to Councilman Steve Vincent.
Yeah, I have a just, I want Jake to play just maybe two minutes of this video clip. It's been seven years since we've been able to celebrate the Jazz and the playoffs. And so, there's a game tonight, and this will help us get prepared for the game once we leave council meeting tonight.
And welcome everyone to Los Angeles. Game seven. Those two words resonate with the finality, the immediacy, and the urgency of the days for the Clippers and the Utah Jazz. Here's a look at the brackets. The winner of this one will go on to play Golden State in a couple of nights. Meanwhile, Houston takes on San Antonio on the other side of the Western Conference bracket. Six was only one for four from the floor. He has struggled in four of the games. So what you want to do is hope that he can unleash Chris Paul and majority of the possessions of this game if they're going to win. And the big thing is to try to stay out of foul trouble. Diaw inside with the layup. Chris Paul guarding Hayward. He got it. Tried to draw the contact. Vapors with an offensive rebound. George Hill from deep. Got it! Look at what kind of coverage you would see with Jordan rolling on the screen and roll. Roy Austin, game six. Hayward inside, kicks it back out to Vapors. Naturally, the guy playing the screener was not up on. Off to turnover. Got a score here. Not Hinkle's. And Joe Hinkle's finally on the scoreboard. For you here in the air. Off here started by Diaw. Nice cut by Austin Rivers. That and also heading up and down coming off the curl. Diaw kicks it out to Hayward.
Well Jake, I think that's enough.
He is shooting at 43 percent and 2 percent.
Jazz will be playing tonight, so we'll make sure the meeting is out in time so we can all come home and group for the Jazz. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have some special recognitions. I'm assuming a scout group here tonight. And Councilmore, I've got you all prepped up so you have a young man ready to come up and introduce you with your troop name and why you're here tonight and what schools you attend.
Uh, excuse me. My troop's number is 808. We go to Gerald L. Wright Elementary. And right now, we're working on service for the community.
Very good. Thank you very much for coming. Enjoy yourselves tonight. Uh, I think that's all special recognitions. Of course, you're all special, but we don't necessarily always recognize you. We like to do the scouts though and other school groups. Our minutes of April 25th then, to the council for motion.
Mayor approves. I would move for approval of the April 25th minutes.
Second. Properly before us, any concerns? All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, we have our comment period. We have several people who have signed up to speak. We remind you that a maximum of five minutes. It is not a question, an answer, or a discussion, or debate. It's your opportunity to share your views with the council, and we will quietly listen. Just got to get my timer set here, so. There we go. Got stopwatch, a timer. With that then, the first one signed up was Natasha Denninger. Is that close?
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, City Council. My name's Natasha Denninger. My address is 834 East, 300 South. So as you can tell, I don't live in West Valley City. But I am here today in my capacity as an educator. I do teach, and I have a lot of kids who do live in West Valley City. And I came last week, and you heard from all sorts of people about your public meeting. And I guess I just wanted to come back and say I would love to still see a public discussion of the resolution from the City Council. And I would still very much welcome you pushing the resolution forward, especially as a way of sending a stronger message to communities living in West Valley City that they are cared for, that they are protected. And so that the kids who come to school every day are not living in fear of coming to school every day. And that their parents are not living in fear of attending family nights, attending teachers' meetings. They're not living in fear of coming to the school. So thank you, and I look forward to hearing more from the City Council.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Markham.
Okay, Mike Markham, 3008 Alice Circle. I guess first of all, I have to start off with an apology to one of the council people that congratulated the young lady that called me a bigot. That council person congratulated them on calling me out. Just to give you, and you've probably already heard this. You know, in my neighborhood, I try not to do anything that will negatively affect my neighborhood. I've been told I'm probably the only West Valley resident that has paid $2,000 to have his own curb and gutter replaced because I didn't like the way it looked. I have nothing in my front yard. I pay a person to come in and trim my trees. If I don't want something in my yard, I just don't trim it back to a stump that comes out. I'm into the community somewhat. I'm the guy that every year has to call and line up the garbage dumpsters to be dropped off in the neighborhood. If I don't call, my good friend Ray Hinkle reminds me nobody in the neighborhood has called. So, you know, I get the first available time. I try to do it when they have their dirt and dog day, but I always miss that because I'm not privy to that information. But, you know, I didn't mean to offend anybody last time. When I was asking you guys, I was just asking you to enforce our existing codes. As I didn't say anything about ICE, nothing. We just need to enforce our codes regardless of who the person is that is running the neighborhood down. I have all, a little bit of everything that's involved with the neighborhood. But yet, I keep a pretty tidy street because I'm not afraid to call. We need more people that's interested. We need more people that's interested in the city that will know all different aspects to talk positive about the city. I mean, I joke about with my neighbors, you know, or my friends, if you're going to come and see me, you know, we've got some used bulletproof vests and stuff that I can get you. Or I called my buddy in Fresno last week and said, "Do I need to wear a vest next time I come down to see you?" Because in Fresno, they've had some of the exact same problems. But to the council person, not quite sure who congratulated the young lady on calling me out as a bigot, I would like to think that if I'm a bigot in West Valley City, you need more of us that care. My yard, like I say, is pristine. It's not colorful because that used to be my wife's job. I mow and trim, so there's no color in the yard except for green on green. But I take pride in my yard. I live in a little cul-de-sac. Everybody around me takes pride in their yard. And I have people in the neighborhood that will come to me and say, "You know, so-and-so's yard is not looking so good. Maybe we need to do something about that." Well, I can do it. I don't know why everybody can't take an interest in their yard and step up and take pride in what you live in. Because I believe, when I managed an apartment building, 15 units up by St. Mark's Hospital, while my wife was talking to the people about the place, I used to look in their car. If their car was a nasty POS, I gave her a no-go because that's the way they live. You know, as you drive around. It amazes me how people choose to live. Because like I've said, to have a nice tidy yard is your own personal sweat and time. You know, it doesn't cost a lot of money. You let the weeds get away from you, maybe you have to spray it. You have to buy a spray. Don't let the weeds get away from you, and you can pull them. Karen's got a great business over there. Somebody wants to put some color in their yard. But, you know, we've got all races living here, and we have all kinds of people not taking care of their places. And I call on everybody. I don't care what yard. So to the council person that thinks I'm a bigot, you probably wish you had more bigots like me that care about the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Julie Erickson.
Hi, everybody. I'm from Chesterfield. My problem is, besides the yards, we all know that's a problem over there. We do need to, it's on the books, get them to take care of our yards. I am in agriculture, which brings me to my next problem is the chickens. We haven't talked about the roosters lately. It's probably been a year. So, I mean, we've had other issues before us, but the roosters, and it's getting to be springtime, summer, is getting out of hand. I have neighbors that have over 100 roosters. They're game roosters. Again, they're not good for eating. Pets, walk them on leash, whatever you want to do. They're only good for fighting. And that's what they do down there because we're agriculture. I'd like to see if we could bring back the point system that hasn't been brought up for over a year on the roosters. And then we could work on the other problem with the yards. I'm like Mike, you know, we try to keep a tidy neighborhood. I'm very particular with my neighborhood. It really bothers me. But we need to work on the roosters, then we work on the yards and the other problems over there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Everyone stayed within their time, and so it worked out great. Anyone else here to speak publicly? Seeing no one else, we'll turn to our city manager. Any comments?
No comments tonight, Mayor. Thanks.
To the council.
Just one comment. Natasha, is that right? Just so you know, we have the discussion in our study meeting. We have a couple of different resolutions that have been drafted. We have yours, we have one from the city. We have, and we will be having ongoing discussions with different groups before we decide how we'll move forward. But we had a lengthy discussion today in our study meeting, and we will continue to do so.
Any others? I would say, just to publicly state it, it is unfortunate that sometimes people get emotional in these issues. And the lady who made those emotive comments, it was really unfortunate and did not help the discussion in any way. We need to have civil discourse in our society, and we need to make sure that we protect the right of every individual to speak their mind and to do so without fear. It is interesting that they want to engender certain individuals. I mean, this, most of the group that came last week was very respectful, talking with individuals afterwards. Most of them, there were just one or two that kind of got carried away. And that's unfortunate. We encourage people to come. We certainly appreciate Mr. Markham, who comes and keeps us surprised of issues in neighborhoods. Yes, we wish they were more like you. We could use a few more who would come here regularly, and the Ericksons and others. So, we appreciate the ones who do come and share with us. That's how we get our public feedback. With that then, we go to the next item on our agenda, which are resolutions. Resolution 17-59. This will, is an agreement between our, between the city to enter an agreement with Mobileite Investments and the Centennial Management Group for the design, installation, operation of a distributed network at the Maverick Center. This is one where a company will come in and set up specialized equipment, better than what they have. They do have Wi-Fi there, but this is a significant expansion on that. And there's no financial impact to the city. And in fact, there's actually possibility of some financial benefit. But it's a positive move, and will help things there at the Maverick Center, especially in connection with the arena football. The screaming Eagles, so, yeah. So it's a real positive thing. That is the resolution before us. Then to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 17-59.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have Resolution 17-60 to award a contract to Vancon Inc. for the 4100 South Storm Drain Project. This would be from 4275 West to 4400 West. They're doing some... No, this one, yeah, I'm getting them mixed up. I got to keep the right meaning. This is a storm drain project. We've had problems there along 4100 South. I've been by there, and when it's, when there's a big storm, why, you know, you get a big pond. And this will help to alleviate that problem. We're excited that it's coming forward and that we're going to get this one taken care of. It's been on the list for a while. We slowly go through. It's not the only one, but it was one of the major ones. So this particular contract will now take care of that. And it's for $301,000. With that introduction, to the council.
I move for approval of Resolution 17-60.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Now, for the scouts, if you think we're moving pretty fast, we discussed all of these last week. And we're now just taking official action. So it's not like these are new to us. So you may not have heard the discussion last week in our study meeting, but we had it. Next, we go to Resolution 17-61. This is to order a contract to Miller Paving for the Tess Avenue sidewalk project. This is, and I got to get the name right. Hillsdale Elementary? Where they changed the configuration there. Lot of traffic now going on the street. Kids walking in that way. There's no sidewalks. So this will help alleviate that. We've been working on it for a while, getting all of the temporary easements to go on and do the work there. And then this will now actually put the sidewalks in and do the other work that's needed.
It'll take a lot of the traffic off of 3100 that has been backing up to allow parents into the front parking lot around the back.
Yeah. So, positive thing, good for the school, good for kids. That's the introduction to it, to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 17-61.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to Resolution 17-62. This is also a contract to Miller Paving, but this one is for the 6800 West Improvement Project. But again, an elementary school, Orchard Elementary. They've had some problems there, especially in the wintertime with some work that will be done there. This will help solve some of those problems. We've been working with them for a while. This is the contract. Oh, and I didn't indicate the amount. Better get that noted. Contracts for $102,000 on this one. I don't think I stated it on the last one, which was $246,000 in fiscal impact, but we only paid $46,000 at that. The rest comes from state rail funds. Okay, with that then, the introduction to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 17-62.
Second. Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to Resolution 17-63. This is to, for the city to enter into an amendment to a ground lease agreement between ourselves and the Utah Transit Authority, UTA. This is a parking structure and will, is a minor adjustment. Well, I guess, not necessarily minor, but it doesn't change the scope much. We are going to go higher, is all. It's going to be taller, more levels, that sort of thing. That is the change to the contract. So it's here before the council for their action. With that introduction to the council.
Mayor, I move for approval of 17-63.
Second. Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now we go to Resolution 17-64. This is to approve an amphitheater event management agreement between the city and Pristine Alpine Entertainment for the USANA Amphitheater. This is a continuation, essentially the same contract as we've had in the past. It will now be extended. I believe it's five years with an additional five option on there for this continued operation. And that's the way it was set up originally. Re-contract with Centennial Management then to actually do the work there. The city doesn't do any of that. But this is the process we go through to get that in place. With that introduction then, to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 17-64.
We have a motion and a second. It's properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now we go to Resolution 17-65. This is a second amendment on a parking easement agreement between the city and Pristine Alpine Entertainment. What is happening here is that at USANA Amphitheater, they have been, they have had right to use certain property up there. Well, the city is going to build a fire station on a piece of property, so we're going to move that easement. The essence of the contract is to take that property back, move to another area of at least equal size for additional parking. For USANA, actually better for them, closer to their venue. And we will use that piece out on 5400 South as a location for a new fire station. That is the issue. With that introduction then, to the council.
I move for approval of the Resolution 17-65.
Second. Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link? Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have Resolution 17-66. This is to adopt a tentative budget for our fiscal year coming July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. And we will set the date of August 8th as a date for the official public hearing. We will wait that long in order to get the proper adjustments in place on property tax rates, et cetera. But we adopt a tentative budget during that time. That budget is subject to change up to that date of August 8th. I mean, there's not huge changes, but you know, it can be changed up to that point. And will reflect the best information at that point. But this is our tentative budget that the city will adopt. I guess it's safe to say that generally, most everything stays the same. There are some additional items in the budget, but most of our operations from the standpoint of the citizens will function just as they always have. Is that a safe statement to say? Then if you want to add any comments on any particular items, why, with that introduction to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 17-66.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Now, I do, I do need to say something on this one because the only concern I have in the budget is we have our vehicles, the $1 million that's coming from fund balance to go into the budget. What that, to me, says is that we have a budget that, you know, we're not covering all of our needs with our regular income. We still have that issue before us of pulling money from some one-time funds in order to balance our budget. That's not a terrible thing to do. It certainly is wise to keep a balanced budget, which is the right thing to do. But it concerns me that we're still doing that in a time of general prosperity. In other words, we're not in a recession. Because if a recession comes, then we not only have other issues to deal with, we would also have that one. And so, because we are going to replace our vehicles, especially our police vehicles, on a fairly regular basis. Just can't get around it, so. So I'm really concerned with that single issue there. Okay? With that then, anyone else want to comment? If not, I've had my say. So thank you very much to the council for action.
We've made that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. It is before us. I forgot to draw my line with a little 200. I was so looking forward to my comment that I forgot to make note on here, even on paper.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Kind of a weak aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I know it's an aye, but I still have that concern, right? Thank you very much. That completes our regular agenda for this meeting. We do have some other meetings right after this, brief meetings. We have three other budgets to approve. Housing Authority, Building Authority, and Redevelopment Agency. Yeah, Redevelopment Agency. And so those will immediately follow this. So with that, then, one final motion to end this meeting, and you'll see us seamlessly go to the next.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. The regular city council meeting is adjourned.
Call to order the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency tonight. And our opening ceremony is Councilman Steve Vincent. He did earlier in our regular meeting. Roll call, we have, everyone is here. I single counsel. Member is here, and number four quorum here tonight. Item number four, we have approval of minutes. We have two items. Here's April 4, 2017 is the regular meeting. Also, April 18 is 2017 is special meeting. So it will turn us over to the council.
Mr. Chair, move for approval of the minutes of April 4th and April 18.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. So, all in your favor, this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. So none, we, this motion passes unanimously. Number five right here is a report of the Chief Executive Officer. The Resolution 17-05, I will turn over to a mid pile.
Thank you, sir. So the tentative budget for the Redevelopment Agency for the year is largely reflective of the same budget as last year. The revenues are different by the amount of roughly $53,000 and a little bit of change. That's out of the $27 million budget. There are no different project areas, and so largely the RDA will function in the same amount that it did in the previous year.
Thank you. And I will turn it over to the council for discussion or motion.
Motion to approve Resolution 16-17-05.
Motion to approve Resolution 16-17-05.
Second.
So we have a motion, have a second, and I will turn over to the city recorder, Nico Kaman.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Norfelt?
Yes.
And Chairman Hume?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, and we have one more, the Resolution 17-06, and I will turn over to Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, thank you, sir. As we move forward with the Fairborn Station Projects next phase, which includes construction of a new public safety building and various other issues. I don't know, it kind of sounds, the light's on, is it not, is it? Okay, all right. Anyway, we have a contract for some demolition of various buildings over there, this includes the Staples Building and the Toys R Us Building here next to City Hall in the very near future for the amount of $210,000 and 900, $210,900.
Thank you, I will turn over to the council.
I move for approval of Resolution 17-06. Second.
We have a motion, have a second, and I will turn over to the city recorder, Nico Kaman for the roll call.
Mr. Norfelt?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
And Chairman Hume?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, and we have one more motion, and we need that.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, so, we, all in favor, please say "aye".
Aye.
So we adjourn.
So Nicole, which meeting's next?
The Housing Authority.
Okay, call to order the West Valley City Housing Authority. We've had our opening ceremony, and let the roll call show that we're all present. We have minutes for April 4th and April 25th.
I move for approval of our April 4th and April 25th minutes. Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Only have one resolution on our agenda tonight, it's our tentative budget, need any discussion of that, Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir, maybe just a quick description, so, almost all, if not all, of the expenditures within the Housing Authority are federal or other source grants that help us pay for housing vouchers, that sort of thing. And the budget for this year is $3.5 million, basically the same, in fact, the number will reflect from a tentative standpoint, exactly the same as last year, although we don't have the final numbers in from the current year, but $3.5 million will represent the, the budget coming into next year.
Thank you. So we have a resolution on there, as, to the council.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of Resolution 17-02. Second.
We have a motion, a second, we'll have a roll call vote.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Norfelt?
Yes.
And Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Have one more motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd call to order the business, the Building Authority regular meeting, know that we've had an opening ceremony and a roll call, and all are in attendance. We have the minutes from April 4th, April 11th, and April 18th of 2017. Do we have any comments or motion?
Madam Chair, move for approval of the minutes of April 4th, April 11th, and April 18th. Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say "aye".
Aye.
Any opposed? Those pass. Mr. Pyle, would you present our Resolution 17-04?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So, the Building Authority is a creation that is mainly for the purpose of carrying debt service for various building projects throughout the city involving public buildings such as fire stations, Maverick Center, those sorts of things. In this particular year's budget, we are drawing a little bit of money out of fund balance for some expenditures that roughly is about a $570,000 difference from last year, which was $4 million adopted budget, so we're talking about $4.5 million this year. The expenditures in terms of type are largely the same, various bonds, as I mentioned, some other projects beside Maverick Center and fire stations that are in there, such things as fitness center, public workshops, that sort of thing. So again, as I mentioned, the Building Authority is basically for the purpose of carrying the debt service across those sorts of projects.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or motion?
Move to approve Resolution 17-04.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, do we have a roll call, please? Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Norfelt?
Yes.
And Chairman Lee?[1770.62]